It is six forty four. We have a call, so I'm going to allow this public hearing to water. And this is a public hearing regarding a charter amendment that we're reviewing. And I'm going to start with a little change. Oh, you have the mic. Don't you do the one. Now we'll repeat the agenda. This is just the agenda of the public hearing. And so that just includes the actual public hearing on charter amendment. And when hearing whose objections concerns. Hearing none, those in favor of you at last. The agenda, please say aye. You were administrative understand through the summary into the record.
The charter and the reservation was a hundred twenty twenty thousand. Section of which referred to vacancies of the town charter. On a charter and reservation of the town upper mobile. Section thirty two thirty two vacancies of the charter of town. Have open on to alter the process for filling vacancies and the board commissions. Chief of that and same vacancies are first half of the commission term or special election. And filling vacancies are second half of the commission term.
If you hand it to me, I'll read it into the record. No, it's good. It was good. Okay, so public, if you are online, you're going to go ahead and raise your hand. If you're in the room, you're going to come up to the podium. When you come up into the podium and you turn to back there. Click it and it's red, so that folks can hear you. You're going to say aye and straighten you on. And then we're going to provide your comment. I'm just going to remind everyone, and this is a public meeting. It is a professional setting and to keep our comments professional and professional. I think a public hearing, I have no comments.
Sorry, some question. Um, how can I search to a little bit of a topic? I'm not sure that um, the section to assess free tickets and the grants and the channel for the challenge that they will show much of a change. In section, we can confirm to them that thirty days from that thirty days from that days. And then go to some to uh, to the three thousand eight days. There's some ideas. That distinguishes between those sections within the charter. Section A where it says free tickets and the grants and the vacancies. And um, shall one be held soon and thirty days. And that way the three thousand exactly the terms of what people saw here. So and one of the five of the law, it says thirty days to twenty five days. So what is the reason for the thirty five days in section A? Section of these, that we're watching. Why would there's no change to a lower amount to a twenty five to thirty all session? To understand the limitations.
So that that's your total question, because you want to make sure we have all the questions before. That was good for the this time, yes. Just concerning the changes of the day. So I'm just asking, I'm not sure to explain that.
You're really, you know, if you're the so sorry, um, you're going to have to be two thirty to A. And where your mentions were trying to move away with the same side of the kind of to the way to show this thing. So. So that's more or less, but we were referring to the special election, so not being held sooner than thirty days and later than thirty five days. Right, right. Just wanted to hear why was accelerated. Now, with respect to special elections, if you ever parent ordinance, that's what that's what the law is for special special elections, I think when we were drafting this, we were looking at having a thirty five, most people in thirty five days related to sixty days. But I'm able to keep it in line with what currently have a special elections. It's certainly in thirty five days. So currently, if we were going to special corrections ordinance, when we're going to have a special election, we fill thirty days. And then later than thirty five days. Right, so it would have had fifty days, this essentially all. So in the laws to have a special election, you can have it. Uh, soon as it is.
I just find it really, it's too much discussion. What it is 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 what it is now. So just so everyone's aware, right now, we are going to be having a special election. And we have thirty days to get everything out. Their election needs to be held for thirty five days. And times that is still looking at that. So in other words, that was standard, and we tried to change that. Yes, that's what I was thinking. Um, who are you? Again, I just want to chief first, is your comment about the sound? I just want to check and make sure if you realize the
The sound is not good. It sounds like it's either echoing, but it's it's really garbled sounding. I mean, we can barely hear what you guys are saying. Now, I'm talking about everybody, even when uh, town administrator Clayton was speaking. It's 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 just, it's something that's not sounding clear. And I think Joe um, made the same comment.
Okay. All right, I think they're going to work on this. While we continue. All right, we're ready.
Linda Killers from Land Drive. Uh, the last time this was discussed, our last uh, question. I would ask people going to be informed who approved candidates are vote to a candidate. Right now, I don't see the grin. There's twenty qualified voters and signatures of qualified voters in the town. But we don't know who these people are. And I think we should at least know who they are that you're going to be interviewing. Uh, and there's nothing in here that provides that. And I've wondered if there was a reason. And uh, I hope it's a good reason.
So the reason you want me to take this, you're wanting was that our town attorney advised that this is important, but it doesn't belong in a charter. It's something absolutely that should be done. We all agree it should be done as a policy, and it will be the policy. Uh, but we were advised that it should, it's not something that belongs in a charter. No hands online. All right. Joe, you're going to be unmuted to speak, and also if you can let us know if the sound improved.
Uh, the sound improved slightly. I had been using the the QA button, which I
We're only getting your every other word. Now we can't hear you at all.
Anything?
Oh, that I heard. I heard anything.
All right, um, well, I'm standing outside. And hopefully, and I'm speaking directly into the microphone. Anything?
Speaking here now.
Okay, um, I was using the QA button, which you have active for this meeting, and I guess you're not monitoring that. So I don't know if anyone else has tried asking questions that way. Um, my two questions are, um, one, you stated that the, at a previous town meeting, that the reasons for doing this is the cost of running an election. I was wondering if you now actually knew what the cost of an election was, um, as you didn't in the last one. Um, the second one was that in the meeting to discuss term limits, um, you would state, I believe all of the commissioners agreed that they wanted more diverse opinions on the commission. And I was wondering how the commissioners themselves selecting commissioners is actually going to help with diversity.
Okay, um. So. You know, it's going to be who applies, and then it's going to be a decision by us. Um, the term limits is a separate consideration. Once we get through, that there was sort of the chance that this this actual amendment would save the town money and the town staff time. And that's why we tackled it first. That is not what's going to happen. We're still going to have a special election. Um, but that is why we're dealing with this separate from um, all the other charter changes, which we will be looking at in May, and then the public hearing will be in June. So. I mean, it just depends on who applies.
So I will take that as, no, you don't know how much an election actually costs.
I knew I missed a question. We are estimating this this election at two thousand five hundred dollars. Um, after this election is over, we will know um, how much it's going to cost, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I think that is all the public in attendance, so am I late, Ada? Okay, so um, I think it's safe to go ahead and close this public hearing. And we will, do any of the motion, yes, can I have a motion to close this public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Commissioner Brooks is with us.
Yes, it starts at seven. Did we start earlier?
Well, we kind of forgot that we agreed to start the public hearing at six thirty and then start our meeting at seven. So we have a two minute recess before the actual meeting starts, and then we'll be back with everyone.
Okay, I'll be back.
Okay. Okay, so it is seven oh six, and I'm going to call the regular town meeting to water.
Okay, I'm here.
All right, um, I'm now going to read our closed session summary into the record. Um, on April eighth, twenty twenty five, at seven fifty five P M, there was a closed session held here at town hall. Proposed um, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials in a humanist private body, highest jurisdiction, or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. In attendance was all commissioners, including Commissioner Corvath, um, who was a commissioner at that time, um, including town attorney Karen Ruff and town administrator Clayton Anderson. And what was discussed was two personnel matters. The meeting adjourned at eight thirty eight P M. That motion was made by Commissioner Corvath and seconded by Commissioner Anderson. We will move on to a review of the agenda for this evening, which includes a consent agenda, um, a voting on the charter amendment resolution that we just had a public hearing on. Resolution twenty twenty five oh one, special election. Or ordinance twenty twenty five oh one, budget amendment. Or next twenty twenty five oh two, vacant property. Um, F B twenty twenty six, budget public comments. And a board discussion on annexation. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, um, favor of the agenda as written, will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any working there, Commissioner Brooks? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion made by Commissioner, seconded by Commissioner Colbert. Should I call it, or do you want to? Aye.
Yes.
Are you in favor of the consent agenda?
I'm sorry, I can barely hear you.
I was wondering if you're in favor of the consent agenda.
Yeah, I can't, I can't make out what she's saying. It's it's muffling.
I can't hear at all. We're working on the sound, so I'm not sure if I should just keep talking and you can tell me that it sounds like you can actually hear me. And start talking about the weather, maybe.
Okay, now I can hear you, and I'm sorry.
Okay, so that's good, whatever you just did in the back to improve the sound quality. You can still hear me.
Not good, but I can hear a little bit of it.
Not good, but you can hear a little bit.
Yeah, I have my ear pressed up to the volume. Clayton, can you say something to me, see if I can hear from your mic? Okay. No. I, it's not making out well. Just Sarah, repeat the one, uh, repeated the question again one more time.
Aye.
I want to show the numbers when you run to the next in my call, once we move on to the next island, because it was the charter and the resolution. If you can't hear me, I'm always sure. As long as I'm starting to get here first.
Yeah, I'll be there shortly.
So we are, um, reservation twenty twenty five oh one, special election. This is a, this has to be an emergency, doesn't it? So, so I'm just certain that I will see my phone and then I'll show you.
This is a resolution of the Board of Commissions of the Town of Upper Marlboro, declaring a vacancy in office, calling a special election to be held on Tuesday, May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. Uh, the poll hours will be from eight o'clock A M until seven o'clock, until seven o'clock P M. Um, the vacancy occurred on April thirteenth, April thirteenth. And um, at tonight's, uh, here at tonight's legislative session, uh, we have a question. Who, a resolution will hold a special election on Tuesday, May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five.
Excuse me, can I, can I make a suggestion? Maybe try another microphone? We cannot hear anything you're saying. I mean, it's like, we're trying to, my head is up against the screen. I can't hear.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not like you're underwater.
Is Chief talking?
I was, can you hear me now?
Yes.
So I was saying, could you all switch to a different mic? The mic that you're using is the, is like the worst one. It's like Commissioner Brooks said, it sounds like you're underwater. It's just, it's very hard. I mean, I'm like
This is not in person.
Huh?
Commissioner Brooks is on his computer remote right now.
Right, as I'm saying, we can't hear.
Let's, Colbert, I'm sure Colbert's going to try his, hang on.
Testing, testing. Can you tell us if he hears?
I can hear you.
That sounds much better.
Yes.
All right, is this better?
Yes.
Okay. All right. We're just going to get cozy in here, and it'll be fine. So the, is there public comment with regard to the special election date being Tuesday, May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five?
Twenty seven of the twenty second.
Twenty seventh.
Twenty seven.
Two seven. It is the day after Memorial Day. Um, I do like to give deference to the Board of Supervisors of Elections, because they're giving up their day. Um, and they worked with town hall staff to come up with a date that worked. Um, if it is a concern, we can, you know, we are Board of Commissioners, if we have a different opinion. Okay. One thing we can do around the, it being Memorial Day is, if we all agree, we can direct staff to send, I think we can. Well, we check the legality of directing staff to send every registered voter a copy of the absentee ballot request form to help people vote absentee, uh, if they'll be traveling. I'm not sure if we're allowed to do that. I think we should be allowed to do that, but I don't know what everyone's thoughts on that are.
You think we did that in the past?
Yeah, I think we did it during COVID.
And I've seen one in the past.
Okay. All right, it sounds like we're in agreement that we can do that, that might alleviate the concerns. All right, so there's, there's no public comment online? Okay, so. We do, okay, hold on. I'm going to let Commissioner Colbert ask this question.
Can we confirm what the date is of the county's special election? I thought it was, I thought it was the twenty seventh, but it may have been
I think it's moved to June. I feel like it's June fourth. Let's take public comment while we double check it.
Uh, Joe Urclay, Old Marlboro Pike. Um, as I was the uh, chairperson for the uh, special elections in twenty twenty. Supervisor, but I was not
Uh, we lost you. We can't hear you anymore. We still can't hear you.
Standing
Is he talking?
Outside now.
We can hear you now that you're outside.
All right, I have no idea why this works, because I now have Wi-Fi at home. Um, the supervisor for the elections in twenty twenty, and I can tell you that we did not automatically send out the application form, but we did notify everyone that it was available. notify everyone that it was available, um, and they could ask by email, by phoning the town hall, um, or sending a letter. So, and then we would send it to them, and many times we just sent it to them electronically and they could print it and send it back in. Um, we may have also made it available online to download. My question though about the date is that, um, there was a change in the last few years, uh, moving the responsibility for the elections from the Board of Supervisors to the town clerk. Are we going to have a town clerk by the time that we have a special election?
Our, our town administrator is acting as our town clerk.
So, no?
I, I do not know the hiring process right now, but our, our town, our town administrator is our town clerk right now in the absence of a town clerk.
Okay. I guess the other question is, um, when are all the notifications going to go out and has the schedule been determined? Normally, the town clerk, even when directed by this, you know, when the supervisor was running it, would put together a schedule of when all of the required deadlines were going to hit relative to the town, um, so that we noticed this could go out in the newspaper.
Isn't my understanding all that is being taken care of, but I'm gonna defer to staff.
To me, what the, um, what the schedule is, so, um, we will be adhering to that schedule and the information will be coming out after, after tonight's meeting.
All right.
Is there any other public comment on this matter? Uh, is there a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five oh one regarding the special election being held on Tuesday, May twenty seventh? Um, would you call a vote for us, please?
Mayor Franklin?
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert?
Aye.
Commissioner Lot? Commissioner Brooks, can you hear me?
Aye.
To, should we do that without him here in person to look at it? We should probably skip over that one too and go to Bang. So we're gonna skip over item C uh, until Commissioner Brooks arrives in person, and we're gonna move to item D, which is ordinance twenty twenty five oh two vacant properties. This is an introduction of an amendment to our ordinance. And it is on, which? Thirty, twenty, thirty two. It's vacant properties, um, and I will let our town administrator introduce it.
So this is an ordinance of the Board of Commissioners for the Town of Upper, Upper Marlboro, amending ordinance. This should be twenty, twenty, uh, amending ordinance, I'm sorry, twenty twenty two oh five, uh, vacant buildings and lots. Um, to clarify to which vacant lots, ordinance twenty two dash oh five applies. Um, just to give a bit of clarification there, um, the original purpose of ordinance twenty two oh five was to address issues related to blighted, neglected vacant structures, um, that, you know, impact the community negatively. Um, but what happened when we adopted the, when the town adopted the ordinance, it included vacant lots that are maintained and that are adjacent to occupied residential properties. And oftentimes, those lots are owned by the same property owner, and they use those lots as a part of their, you know, side and rear yard. So it wasn't the intent um, to place a vacant property tax on those lots. So what, what this ordinance does, it, it correct, it corrects that. And it basically identifies and defines, um, well, it exempts, uh, those types of residential lots from being, uh, taxed to the vacant property tax rolls.
Are there any questions on the board?
I'm understanding, uh, this update, so this is, this is just clarifying that this is intended for, uh, commercial or industrial lots, right? It's not intended for residential lots.
Well, it, it can be for residential lots. If, for example, if you have a vacant structure that's owned by the same person, and then he's got a lot next to it, but the structure's vacant, it, a tax would be applied there.
So would it be easier or help me with the legalese here to identify the vacancy of the structure as opposed to the lot itself?
Well, that's also identified, and, and so you gotta have both, right? So, um, if you have a vacant structure, that's, so you have one owner with three lots. If, if the structure is vacant, then that would, that's gonna be a part of the vacant property tax rolls. If it's occupied, then you're not going to be, um, a part of the vacant property tax.
How do we know that it's vacant?
I mean, through, through code enforcement inspections and things like that, we can tell what, what a vacant, you know, if a property is vacant.
And they get a notice, and so they have, if, if the, it's not vacant, they can come to the town administrator, that's in that original ordinance.
And say it's not vacant, or we have a renter coming in X amount of time, but, um, but yeah, but typically through, through code enforcement is how we identify with the vacant.
Commissioner Brooks, did you have any questions about the vacant property?
No, I, I, it was just answered. I was, I would, my question was how would know if it's vacant? And I, he would, he just answered.
All right, um, do we have any public comment on this matter? All right, seeing no comment, is there a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty five oh two regarding amending ordinance twenty twenty two oh five vacant buildings and lots?
Mayor Franklin?
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert?
Aye.
Commissioner Lot? Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
So, oh, sorry.
Sorry, motion made by Commissioner Lot, seconded by, um, Commissioner Colbert, and was unanimous of all sitting commissioners. I see, but, um, so we're gonna, um, take public comment right now on the F Y twenty twenty six budget. I think that survey is still open. I don't think we've gotten any recent responses, um, but that is being checked, so that's another way to comment. If you, if you'd like to comment on the F Y twenty six budget, it, you don't have it in front of you. We're not discussing it tonight. This is just general comment on the F Y twenty six budget. Um, I committed to making sure that that was available to everyone, every meeting until we adopt it, and so anything you would like to say about the budget, please come forward and let us know. Anyone on? No, okay, all right, um. So we are gonna move on to a board discussion regarding annexation, and I'm gonna turn it over to our town administrator.
Good evening, everyone. Well, the annexation process is moving forward. Um, we have the survey, um, I've been working with the town attorney, we've drafted the, the language for the legislation. Um, we are now, I guess we, we need, we're looking for two more consents, and we need some additional consents.
We're finalizing a few more.
Yeah, which area we're talking about?
What, the, um, is phase two?
It's, I can't remember what phases, but the one out towards three oh one that we haven't talked in, that's, yeah, the same one we've been working on this whole time, yeah.
That's the one, residential, commercial?
Residential and commercial, yeah, that extends up. Yeah.
So what are you saying? You need two more?
Well, we're looking for additional consents, and the reason we're looking for those additional consents, we only need twenty five percent. But we're looking for additional consents so that we have more, um, and it's always good to have more, more consents and be, you know, closer to fifty percent, closer to twenty five. So we are looking to get those a- additional consents, and I do believe we're, we're pretty.
I think we have, we have two or three that are, that will be in front of us, um, around the same time that we're also getting the, uh, ordinance.
And the ordinance, right, and once, and once we have those consents, we will have everything in place to move forward at that time.
Questions?
So we still have, just wanna make sure we still have stipulations in place for, um, for the, uh, the business that wants to come in, correct?
For the business, which, for the, um, the, uh, the, the property that's residential, they want to turn into commercial. Is that the same thing?
Oh, yeah, this, so that, that a grand annexation agreement stands and holds. There's a couple of annexation agreements we've entered into. The three we're entering into, we're looking to enter into right now are this very simple presidential ones we've done before.
Right, so, so all of the, so all of the previous agreements again still stand, same ownership, so nothing's changed there.
Commissioner Brooks, did you have anything on annexation?
No.
This is a public meeting, so public comment is allowed on every item, so if anyone has anything to say regarding annexation, um, please come up or raise your hand. Okay. Yep. Joe, I think you might need to go outside again. It's nice out there, at least. We still can't hear you.
Uh, can you hear me at all?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Okay, um, have any of the annexations since we brought in, um, the Equestrian Center? Are any of those going to be effective before the special election date?
The annexation of Valley Lane and up to Route Four has been effective since March of last year.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, so, um, charter amendment, or I know. Yeah, he can hear us better. So I, we, we have the budget amendment and the charter amendment. We can do the budget amendment, but I can't see it. But I could read it to him. Yeah. Let's do the, we'll go to the budget amendment next, which is ordinance twenty twenty five oh one, um, F Y twenty twenty five budget amendment, and I'm going to ask, um, our town administrator, just read it into the record and then, um, explain what we're why we're, we're hesitating over here. I would read it as it is, and then we'll.
And we'll go ahead and I'll explain what the amendment.
So this is a, ordinance twenty twenty five dash oh one, um, and we are adopting and approving budget amendments for the fiscal year twenty twenty five budget. Now, there's going to be an amendment to this budget amendment, really, because, um, we had to, we, we didn't reflect the cost of the special election in the budget. So, uh, the budget will, will be amended to reflect a twenty five hundred dollar increase, and that increase will come from our reserve account. And we have, we have indicated the changes on the budget up here, that, that's a mayor has, um, with strike-throughs for the previous budget and redlined for what the current changes are going to be. Um, the title of the.
Well, you want me to just propose the amend?
Yeah, well, I'll just go, the title of the, uh, budget ordinance is also going to change to amended budget ordinance, uh, adjustment for fiscal year twenty five.
And how much money are we talking about?
Uh, two thousand five hundred dollars, uh, the two thousand five hundred dollar increase, um, to pay for the special election. And that money will come from our reserve account.
All right, um, so I would like to make a motion to amend the, let me see. I would like to make a motion to amend the budget as reflected here in my packet, um, to reflect the cost of the special election. So if you all wanna look at this, and if someone is willing to second my motion, I can read the numbers. Yeah, so the, the changes are that the ordinance title will be an amended ordinance relating to adopting and approving budget amendments for the fiscal year twenty twenty five budget. The changes, um, on page two of the a document, but on page twenty nine of your packet, are that miscellaneous revenue will increase to seventy three thousand three hundred ninety seven three of the document and thirty of the packet, the general government budget will increase to expenditures, right, will increase to seven hundred and six thousand six hundred ninety five dollars, and the total expenditures for the budget will balance at four million seventy seven thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars. And we are all looking at that right now, um, except for you, Commissioner Brooks. Do you understand what we've done, and are you, do you have any concerns?
No, I understand.
All right, is there a second to my motion? Okay, uh, would you call that, and then we'll do the next motion?
Mayor Franklin?
Public comments before, so we need public comment now on the amended budget.
Well, but we'll take public comment after we amend it.
Okay.
Do you see what I'm saying? Okay, so we'll take public comment on the proposed amendment, and then we'll take public comment, because we're gonna vote again on the whole thing. This is just on the amendment. So does anyone have comment on the change we're making to it? Okay, um, oh, okay. Yes. Go ahead, Joe.
Sorry, I just lowered my hand after the last one.
Okay. Yeah, it's a, it's a tricky Roberts rules thing. Um, we're trying to make sure we do things more in line with that. So we have a second, um, would you call the vote on the amendment for us?
Mayor Franklin?
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert?
Aye.
Commissioner Lot? Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Oh, sorry, motion passes was made by Mayor Franklin, seconded by Commissioner Colbert. Uh, now we are looking at the amended ordinance, adopting the amended ordinance, um, so is there public comment on this budget amendment? As amended? Oh, Commissioner Brooks is here, so we can show him. Does, are there any online? Okay, looks like we're good. Not yet. We will sign it when we're done. Um, is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty five oh one? F Y twenty twenty five budget amendments? Would you call our vote?
Mayor Franklin?
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert?
Aye.
Commissioner Lot?
Commissioner Lot?
Motion was made by Commissioner Lot, seconded by Commissioner Colbert, and unanimous of all commissioners. And now we will move on to Charter Amendment Resolution oh one twenty twenty five, section eighty two dash thirty two vacancies. And I will turn it over to our town administrator. There's a couple of pages in the packet, right? It's page thirteen through twenty seven.
Sorry about that. Okay, um, this is Charter Amendment, Amendment Resolution number zero one twenty twenty five. A Charter Amendment, Amendment Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Upper Marlboro, Maryland. Amending section eighty two thirty two vacancies of the Charter of the Town of Upper Marlboro to alter. The process fulfilling vacancies on the Board of Commissioners. To provide fulfilling vacancies during the first half of a commissioner's term by special election. And filling vacancies during the second half of a of a commissioner's term by appointment by the commission.
Did you want to talk about the survey results as well?
So, so the town did conduct a a survey. We had an online survey and also. We went door to door as well, not collecting the ser- this survey data for the charter amendment. And I think there were twenty six respondents, or twenty nine respondents, and we had seventy four percent. Of respondents were in favor of the amendment. I can give you the exact break breakdown, and there were also three questions that that were asked. The first question was, do you support or oppose this amendment? Twenty two people supported it, seven people opposed it, and so it wasn't seventy four percent, it's actually seventy six percent. The second question that was posed was, have you come out to vote in a special election in the town? Twenty two people said yes, seven people said no. And the third question was, does the cost of an off-cycle special election impact your decision on this charter amendment? And twenty two people said, yes, the town should reduce the election cost. Six people, six residents said, no, the town should should hold these elections regardless of the cost.
Is there any discussion on the board about this charter amendment before we vote?
We actually got up, got out and got a chance to knock on some doors and talk to some folks and try to get some feedback. You know, it's really hard. Um, we want to make good decisions, but it's hard when we don't get feedback. And it's crucial to us making good decisions.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Yeah, I I'm just glad we got out and got to all of the people's homes and. Um, it's good to see that we got some feedback. I mean, it would have been great to get a lot, lot more, but this is good. Because when you put stuff on people's doors, what else can you do? I mean, that's, you know, you, once you put it on their doors, you get response back if you, that's good. If you don't, you don't, but. Uh, you know, we talk about getting out and saying, oh, we should highlight. Letting people in the town know this about this, about that, but once you put stuff on people's doors. That's the epitome of asking them. I mean, act for me, what else can you do if you don't put stuff on people's doors? Yeah, if they don't respond, and then, I mean, what can, what else can you do?
I think. That. The door knocking made a difference when you look at the distribution of who responded. It's really. I mean, there's three main areas, but it's still spread throughout the town, so I think that is positive, so. All right, um, is there a motion to approve Charter Amendment? Resolution oh one twenty twenty five, section eighty two dash thirty two vacancies. Is there a second? Would you call that vote for us?
Mayor Franklin?
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert?
Aye.
Commissioner Lot?
Motion was made by Commissioner Lot, seconded by Commissioner Colbert and approved unanimously by all present. So we will move on to administrative updates. We kind of been informally seeing if commissioners have anything they want to add, so I wanted to formalize that back in. Is there any updates from any commissioners? Commissioner Brooks?
No, we're. I think, uh, Aiden and Clayton are doing a good job with getting the. Uh, Marlboro Day together and the events committee is coming along. Everyone's involved and it's. Coming along very smoothly.
You guys are busy right now.
Yes.
Couple of different things. So I've had a couple of meetings with the Board of the Economic Development Work Group. There's some good ideas. Uh, strategies coming out of that. Uh, that group will be reaching out to some folks who've expressed interest in. Doing some of that work. We were actually able to attend a grand opening of a new business in town this. Not this past Saturday, but the previous Saturday, and that individual was able to come and provide some. Input and get some good resources on the last meeting that we had, so, um, think things are going well there. Also, I mentioned in the last meeting, but just a little bit more context, I was able to attend last month the. Uh, National League of Cities Congressional City Conference in downtown DC, which is a great opportunity to. Network and under- and understand some of the challenges for municipalities across the country, especially. Uh, aligning with some of the ones who are similar size and opportunities of the Town of Upper Marlboro. Uh, so that was a, uh. A great opportunity and something for the town to continue to be, uh, in involved in. And the last thing I mentioned, this this coming Saturday, it's not a town event, it's not a town affiliated event. Uh, but there is an organization hosting a mini health clinic at the Sanctuary Square. Uh, facility right off of three oh one, that's providing a lot of resources and opportunities for. Members of the community in and around the town. So anyone who's. Open to kind of, I believe it's from twelve to three on Saturday, and it's hosted by the National Minority Health Quality Forum, uh, for anyone who's interested in that, so.
Also on Saturday is the town cleanup. Um, that starts at ten, am I right? Ten to twelve or ten, yeah, ten to twelve. Um, right now, there's only three people signed up. So it will be me and three residents. Anyone else who wants to join us, um, we will have the. The liability forms to sign there. We'll have extra gloves, pickers, bags. So don't feel like, cause you didn't sign up yet, you can still sign up, or you can show up at the pond between ten and twelve. Yeah, they've been the ribbon cuttings, uh, walking around town. It was really great to get back out. And knocking on doors and chatting with residents. It's one of my favorite parts of doing this job, so.
I'd just like to say that we still need to to drum up some participation, particularly, um, we need to put the, uh, commit. Committees back together, the historical committee, the arts committee, the green team. We need your help and soliciting your help, and hopefully you guys can go online and sign up and. We can get things back together. That's it.
Thought of one more announcement, which is more administrative, which is that we are recruiting. A new member of our Board of Supervisors of Elections. We have a longtime member who will be here through this special election and the next election. Um, but then we'll be moving out of town, and so we're going to need to replace that person. We'd like to do it now so that the new person gets some experience with elections. So if you're interested in elections, um, please reach out. I think it's probably clerk or info, or there's a form online. So please go ahead and do that. Please register for Marlboro Day, all that, that is online. I hear there's a fishing derby too, which is kind of cool this year. The date for Marlboro Day, yes, is June seventh. I keep getting it mixed up with the sixth, but it's the seventh this year. I think that's it.
Out of the Economic Development Work Group, we do still have, uh, some of money, uh, available for, uh, the facade improvement program. So we'll be making sure that businesses, uh, in the town are aware of that through communications and encouraging those. So that we make sure we don't lose those funds. So, uh, anyone who knows of a business or property owner in the town who might. Who could possibly use some funding for, uh, some upkeep will will, uh, we have some of that to to work with.
It just reminded me that we also have a resident financial assistance program, and we have residents. I know things are hard if you're a federal employee. Um, it's not a lot, but, um, it's four hundred dollars to help with utility bills or rent. And it's a very straightforward process. It, you don't need to provide income information. You just need to let us know that you, um, were were a federal employee. And, um, that process will happen, and it is separated from this board. It is done by staff, uh, and volunteers. Does staff have any administrative updates for us?
Well, just really. We're having an essay contest for kids. We'll be giving away a little trophy for first and second place. We're having the fishing derby. You know, for kids, uh, up to fifteen years of age, um, who can catch the most, I think it's the the biggest fish, but still. So, you know, who can catch the, uh, biggest fish, and there, there, there's, there's a prize for that. We're looking for, you know, different. Uh, you know, car clubs to come out. We, you know, best in show car, we're going to do some things like that this year. So, you know, we're, we're just really encouraging, um, a lot of folks to come out and and really have fun and and. And enjoy that day. I think it's from eleven, it's from eleven to two, and the parade is at ten o'clock, so.
Sounds fun. I'm excited. All right, commis- or, sorry, Director Bond. Uh, Chief Burse, I know you're at a chief's conference right now. All right, public comment on anything not on the agenda?
Uh, Patty Callicott, Church Street, a couple of things. Uh, I see the resolution says that it was introduced, but you actually voted on it is. How, how, how did that work? On the agenda, it says that the special election, it was introduced, and I believe you just voted on it. Okay, um, also, I looked in the survey and, um, I didn't see Church Street reflected on there, but I know Brian Callicott and myself. Had addressed significant text or provided significant text, but that wasn't included in the. Was that included in this and just not put on Church Street? And then finally, is there any way we can get a copy of a line item budget for two thousand six? I have not seen one anywhere available. I've kind of looked, and I don't know where I can find a copy of the line item budget. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, so the copy of the line item budget was in. The March work session. I think there was in the March work session or in the March town meeting or both. That's was the initial draft, and we'll, you'll be getting a newer version. As we all will for the May meeting. Um, the survey was different than the comments, so we all took in those comments. We talked about them extensively. I read them into the record, um, but they weren't, the survey was, is separate from the. Comment portal. So we always want your comments, but if you want to be calculated with the survey, then that's why, and and I. I know you guys weren't, didn't actually, I don't think, take the survey because Church Street isn't on there. I'm not sure, but I talked to Brian. Commissioner Brooks and I have both talked to him and handed him the survey, so. They're two separate things, and we'll have another survey for, um, the other charter stuff. Make sure to do. Both, because the data from the survey can't really, you kind of compromise the data if you combine it with other information. So. Um, sorry, so that, um, all, and then with the special election, we kind of had a. It was introduced and adopted because it's a resolution. It doesn't need to be, both things don't need to happen separately. Do you have something?
Uh, well, just also, I don't want it to seem like because the survey, the survey, the comments weren't included in the survey. That the comments weren't taken into account, because the comments that we've all received copies of and that were made here in public, some of the changes were incorporated into the actual. That we just passed, so all of those things were taken into consideration as well, and the issue was.
And we still have the comments because we only really talked about the comments around this piece. We will bring back the, you know, we will. They're in my binder, I know. I think they're in everyone's binder, so we'll be looking at it again as we move forward with the rest of them. And I think this is something we should also sort of point out while we're here, is that. We just adopted a charter amendment that allows us to appoint people, but we're also having a special election, and this is, has to do with timing. The charter amendment will not be effective for forty five days. Um, and by that time, we'll be past our deadline to have a special election, so we do need you to come out for that special election. Any other public comment? Preliminary, preliminary approval of the next meeting agenda. I don't know if we have it on a slide, or if you just want to tell it. You do. Oh, it's just TBD. FY twenty six budget. There may be some annexation agreements.
Yes.
We'll go back to him. I I will go back and let him.
This is attached to the budget, but I think there needs to be a discussion about this one. What direction? We're going to move and to get them as well as we do that.
Yes, there's another item we said we had to talk about, but it was part of the agenda too. For budgets, yeah, I can't remember. It was part of the budget, so we didn't, oh, the parking infrastructure.
Budget item, uh, is that another purely a public comment session, or are we going to have to update it?
We have the updated line, um, and, you know, hopefully there can be some concession that we could pass it in May.
Yeah, right, so. There should be, the budget book will hopefully be ready as well, but we have a special election. Tying things up.
And again, associated along with with the budget, there was, um, some discussion and it seems pretty good. Um, I know that in the past, we've, we've gotten insurance from other agencies, uh, but we're looking at possibly. Having our own interim program this year and with the step up, and the budget and with the economic development work group, this is still around budget, but. The town looking for brand opportunities for economic development, specifically for the economic development working group. To be able to, to use those, um, to use those funds with some of their, you know, projects and programs. What that would look like.
So I think, I think we kind of agreed to just keep it to these three things unless there's anything else major. So. Um, everyone's good with that? I I understand that, uh, Joe Herklay is texting Commissioner Lot to ask for. He, he put his hand up after we had moved on. Um, is, yes, go ahead.
We did, something we did.
Oh, the, um, the mental wellness check-in program. That wasn't in, that was not in the budget. When we presented it in March, um, but it can be paid for out of the, uh, public safety budget with. Once the annexation is complete, we are going to be looking for ways to spend public safety money or give it back. So. Do the, any commissioners have objections with me reopening public comment for Joe Herklay? Okay, so I'm going to. Use my privilege to open the public comment to allow Joe Herklay. An additional public comment.
Joe Herklay, Old Marlboro Pike, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, so I actually had put my hand up when you were still, when the commissioners were giving their, their administrative updates. Um, so I have no idea why you didn't see it. Um, I was going to mention that, uh, the next board game night is a week from this Wednesday, so, so next Wednesday. Um, if any candidates would like to come down, we usually have a few of us there. If anyone, you know, potentially wants to meet candidates, it might be a opportunity. Um, also, the library is doing a lot of events this coming month. Um. They have a mental health for children playdate, uh, for men, children's mental health awareness week. Um, they will also be having their summer reading kickoff coming soon, but I think that might be in early June. But, um, you know, check the library's schedule. They have lots of stuff going on. Thank you.
All right, um, yeah, if you're looking to run in the special election, uh, everything will be online. It will take a day or two, but they needed this date from us before they could put anything online, so.
So you should, it should be, it should be online by the close of business tomorrow, the close of business on Wednesday.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion, motion made by Commissioner Lot, seconded by Commissioner Colbert, unanimous of all commissioners present.